Livingston, Montana.
Sorry about that, Jim.
Okay, we'll start over. Hi, this is the Livingston zoning commission. November seventh zoning commission meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Alright. Thank you, everybody for being here. Jim Woodall told me that the new city planner Jennifer Severson will be dropping in. Sometime tonight to say hi for a bit. But I think what we should do is just get on with our business. Here at hand. So let's just start the agenda here. Michael, you sent over the September thirteenth and the October eleventh meeting minutes. A while back. I've looked through those. I don't know if everyone else looked at those. Well, I. Did not find any errors or omissions on the September thirteenth minutes. And on the October eleventh minutes down at the bottom. It said our next regular meeting will be on October eleventh. And that really should have been a working session on October, I think twenty-six is the date. Two weeks ago that we had our session. And then today is the seventh. So with that correction to the minutes. Anyone else have any other corrections? If not, can I get a motion to approve the September thirteenth and October eleventh minutes? Deborah, you're muted.
I'm muted. I'll support the motion to approve the minutes for October and November.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second that.
Alright, I think that's Wendy. I'm going off the sound of your voices. Both Michael and Wendy are not on video tonight, so. Yeah, Wendy, on a second. All those in favor of approving those two minutes, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, those two pass. Now. Michael DeChellis, we had a two weeks ago, you were gone. We had a working session. Talk about the Gateway Overlay District, and we do not have minutes. For that meeting. I suppose that we should compile those. Certainly, I could go back. We can go back to the to the audio video that's on the city's website. And listen through it and write those up. Would you be willing to do that, Michael, or?
Jim, I just got a message from Michael that she's having technical problems, but she can hear you.
Okay, she can't. She can't talk?
Apparently not.
Okay. Alright. Well, then, in that case, what I will do is I will take the time. To go through the reporting. Or a working session on October twenty-sixth and write those up and send those out. So that inter-meeting in December, we can look those over and get approval on those. Alright, that's that. Public comments? No, we don't have anybody here today. Oh, Michael DeChellis, you're with us.
Barely, but we figured it out. I'm happy to watch that video. Just send me. Is the link online, you said?
Well, if you go to the city's website.
Okay.
It's it's on there.
Okay, awesome.
Oh, I didn't hear that. You'll you'll do that, Michael?
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to write that up.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so. We are kind of back where. We were last meeting talking about Gateway Overlay Districts. For those of you who were not on that meeting, and I think that's Michael Woodslake and Michael DeChellis. We kind of talked through both the sort of the process. That is necessary. There's kind of three components to writing up a gateway overlay. And. In those three components, one is to look at the map. There's a current map. That the only copy I found was in the Growth Policy Act. I don't know what page that was, twenty-six. There's a map there. I assume GIS has got something also. And just to look at that. Pretty closely with on a. Pretty close level and see if there should be any adjustments to that map. Number two is the design ordinance. And in the zoning ordinance, there is. Already. A chapter thirty-two. Design review overlay zoning district. Already written up, and that's been sitting in there unused for. Many years. And so. My feeling on that is we'll have to. Look through that pretty carefully. And and see. What modifications we would want to do with it. Well, there's a chunk in there on building design. Building character, building entrances, street level interest. Building mass and tail roof form signage. What it doesn't include is anything on. Anything on landscaping or parking or setbacks or building heights, anything like that. That's the kind of the second thing that we would. Want to put together in. Wire form. And the third thing is to write up the enabling. Ordinance for the gateway overlays in the in the. Historic preservation ordinance. Which is thirty-one point oh-one. It would be our model for that. It includes purpose and intent, territorial jurisdiction, permitted uses. Something about if there's going to be a design review, who's what's what's the organization of that review process? Permitting. That's probably the most. Um, so anyhow, that's just, I mentioned those things just as a refresher to you. We talked about these two weeks ago and. Then I suggest that we step back a little bit and. Think about what we want the goals of a design or of a gateway overlay to be. And I have a list that I read through some reasons for that. And then the discussion turned last time to perhaps it would be better that if we would have a. Public process where we would invite the public to meet with us, have some sort of a design charrette. To get a bunch of feedback from the community about what the community wants. Their the entrances. To the town to be. Anyhow, that's the process to date. That's where we kind of stand. And at this point, I'm going to take a break, and I noticed Jennifer Severson is with us now. Like to welcome Jennifer. Maybe Jim Woodall, would you like to make an introduction?
Sure, brief, but I can do that. Jennifer turns with this. She's been with this, what, since the first? She's going to be our new planning director. And she is here to listen and learn and. Start to catch up so she can take over the the reins on all the planning and zoning. So with that, I'll let her introduce herself, and then if the board would want to introduce themselves to her, that'd be great.
Alright.
Yeah, hi. I apologize for being late. I was having some technical difficulties at home, so I came back to the office. And I'm Jennifer Severson. I just moved here from Boulder, Colorado. I worked for Boulder County. For about eight and a half years, first as a flood recovery planner, tracking FEMA projects, and then I did zoning reviews for. Stream restoration projects and then non-flood stuff, all kinds of land use docket reviews. And then the last job I had there was I was an access and engineering planner. My group. Reviewed land use dockets for private access standards, drainage grading, that kind of thing. But I have a pretty diverse background before that. I'm originally from New Orleans, so I started in Louisiana. Never thought I'd end up in Montana, but so far I love it. And I'm sorry I brought the snow with me from Colorado. I understand it doesn't normally snow this much, but I kind of love it.
Okay, well, great. It's good to have you here.
Yes, nice to be here.
Alright, well, we'll make introductions here. I'll start, I guess. I'm the chair. My name is Jim Berg. I'm often the only native Montanan in the group. But I've been a builder and an architect my pretty much my whole career. Built houses over in the Galton Valley for twenty years. And my specialty has always been energy efficient buildings. I've done a lot of super insulated net zero houses. I do energy audits. Consulting work, that sort of thing. And I'm I'm trying to be retired. I've got one last house I'm working on. And some audits, whatnot, but I'm trying to be retired. So that's me.
Nice to meet you.
Michael Woodslake. Yep, my name's Michael Woodslake. I'm owner of Livingston Landlady, a Realtor broker here in Livingston. Through the Realtor organization, I did a lot of work at the state level. With affordable housing, trying to figure out that puzzle. But. Pass those reins on to others as terms came and went. Now just concentrate on. Working with a bunch of great owners here in the Livingston area to do just that, provide. Provide affordable housing as best as we possibly can here in these challenging times. Yeah.
I think I emailed you in my search for rental at one point, so yeah.
We even spoke, I believe, once. So, yeah, we did.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Deborah?
Hello, I'm Deborah Monahan. Let's see, I guess. I have a background in Director of Operations for various design firms. And have lived in Livingston about a decade. Not sure what else to say, really, except I love it here and I share everybody else's enthusiasm for keeping this place. Special and solving our unique problems that we're. Facing with growth and affordable housing and how to develop correctly and grow correctly. And I'm excited to have a planner back.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Michael DeChellis.
Hey, Jennifer, I'm Michael DeChellis. I'm the girl Michael DeChellis. You might run into my husband, boy Michael DeChellis, on the conservation board. I've been at Livingston for about five years. I have a background in public health and I work for a Montana State. Agency, not-for-profit that focuses on supporting community food systems. So my interest in zoning kind of came about with my. Thinking on how to support food systems, agriculture, land access, public health, housing for workers, things like that. Before Livingston, I was in Austin, Texas, and before that I was in New York, so really enjoying being in the Livingston community.
Nice to meet you.
And Wendy?
Hi, Jennifer. Welcome to Livingston. We're really excited to have you. Let's see, I guess I born and raised in Montana. And my background career was mainly in civil engineering. In the development world in Bozeman and Gallatin Valley. For almost. Twenty-five years, and I also did a lot of work in sustainability and. Smart growth type. Initiatives. I then became a recovered engineer and I went into the nonprofit sector. And I run a small nonprofit based here in Livingston. We do. River conservation and wetland restoration across the state. And yeah, we're just really excited to have you and. Hopefully, we can make a difference with all this growth that we're seeing. So, welcome to town and thank you for bringing the snow.
Thanks very much. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. So it's nice to finally be here. Took a while.
Alright, good. Well, I don't know, Jennifer, if you have any questions for us. If if not, we'll, I guess, proceed with our our meeting. I think we're at the stage now, we're just doing some planning and more generalized discussions on. The Gateway Overlay Zoning District. I think maybe for your. Information, I've also got a couple of. I kind of broader ideas that I'm. Exploring. One is to have a joint meeting between. Trees, parks and trails and planning and us to all get together. And to compare notes and find areas of common common direction. And just to, you know, get up to speed on what everybody's doing. And we've I've talked to Melissa News about that. She's in favor of it. So that needs to be organized and scheduled, but that's kind of in the works. And then the other idea that I would like to pursue and it's. Beyond the scope of the zoning commission, but I'd like to have. Create some sort of Park Street Improvement District. And I've harped on this quite a few times to people here on the zoning commission, but Park Street is our major artery and it's also. Our major bottleneck. And it's one side of the Park Street is. Got the railroad on it, so the railroad owns all the property, so there's any businesses that are located on that side. Of Park Street or on leases. So there's a real lack of development on that side of the street and even. Even on the city side of Park Street, there's a lack of infrastructure. Awful lot of buildings, it's kind of strip mall kind of. Format with the parking in the front and buildings in the rear sort of thing, so access is pretty unregulated. There's a total lack of any. Any vegetation or parks or or even good signage along Park Street, so. My thought on the matter would be to form a. A a working group that would, I'm sure, have to include Montana Department of Transportation. The city. The railroad and some of our other committees to sort of work on what those possibilities. I see the need for. As much curb and gutter as we could put in along Park Street on the. The north and west sides and as many little pocket parks as we could find room for. Just to make the town more attractive, slow traffic down. Maybe regularize some of the intersections so that. That you know, it becomes more functional. Anyhow, that's just for your information. Something we'll try to get done that's coming here.
Good to know.
So you're welcome to stay with us as long as you'd like, Jennifer. But I think we'll start now talking about the Gateway Overlay Districts and try to make a plan out of that. For those of you who were not with us last week, Michael DeChellis, Michael Woodslake. We came up with the idea that rather than having us as a zoning commission. Write up new regulations. You know, that it would be better if we could have some sort of a fairly broad public meeting. Do some advertising on it. And so get those people that are involved, get those people, some of the people, I suppose, that were heavily involved in the growth policy. People from the city together in one room to. Do a kind of a design charrette and and start to put together a list of goals and. A wish list of how we'd like to have the entrances to Livingston be improved. So that's kind of where we left it last, two weeks ago. I talked to Jim Woodall about it and he suggested. Couple of reasons, because Jennifer, of course, is new here and she's getting up to speed that. Probably it's more realistic to try to schedule something in January. As as a time to have a public meeting. And then the other thing Jim. Suggested to us is that we actually put together a basic document. To present to the public so that they, you know, when we have a meeting that they have something. React to. In other words, it would have some ideas and suggestions on. Ways to improve the entrances to town that might include landscaping, might include. I don't know, some hardscaping. And I'm not sure, that kind of thing, parking and setbacks and that kind of thing. That's what he suggested. I think it's a good idea and. Anyhow, that's that's what I know. That's where I think we are at. Is there any comment from the commission about about that and that as that is a plan?
Jim, I think that sounds like a great idea. To do the to do the charrette and have a little bit more time for us to do some work and get some ideas together. Do you guys have a working document or anything from last meeting, or is my best bet to get caught up? To watch the video and then. Take notes, obviously, as secretary?
Right, no, we don't have a working document, I think. You know, I have my own notes that go back.
We did do some, didn't we do some edits in Google?
Well, that's right. Yes, Michael, we we set up a Google Doc page. I think you should have been invited to that. And I think I know Wendy has done some editing on it. And that that's the document, that's the building design. Document. And that is.
Do you know what it's called? I can check my drive. And did you share it before last meeting, during last meeting?
I think I shared it before the meeting.
Ah, I got it.
Okay.
Cool.
So that's there, yeah, and that includes. I think both that that design. Review standards and also that, and then the historic standards is in. Anyhow. That I would encourage all of you to kind of look that through and maybe spend some time thinking about. What's in there, what works, what doesn't work.
My question would be, what do we need to do to get this pulled together?
I don't know, Jim, do you think this is something we need to run by the city commission or? But do we need any special authority to have a meeting like this? Or can we just can we just schedule it as our regular January zoning commission meeting? And do some extra advertising and maybe. Put it on in the community room or something or other?
Yeah, I, Jim, I think we can do that as part of your regular meeting schedule. Probably be good to to notify the city manager so he can let the city commission know what's going on. I don't think it requires any special permission.
Okay. Alright. Okay, I will do that.
I feel like we still need to put some significant thought into that. Having a facilitator and a plan and how that will how that will play out. Especially if we want to get the type of feedback that we want to get. Yeah, I guess I think we need to have that kind of plan, so.
Yeah, that was, I know you mentioned that last two weeks ago, Wendy. That brings up the possibility of us incurring some costs if we have to pick up a facilitator and have them over for. A few hours.
Yeah, Jim, if we if we're going to do that, which is probably a good idea. Then we probably should make certain that the city commission will authorize the the cost. Which I don't think will be a challenge. It's just something that we got to tell them upfront.
There's also designing and printing posters or whatever visuals the public is going to need.
Yeah.
So I feel like we need to be. Organized and making sure we've covered at least most of as many bases as possible for what we'd like feedback on.
So do you have a picture in your mind about what sort of things we might we might need to print up?
I like if, I don't know if you still have the. Website that I sent last. Last meeting. But I think examples of. Lighting, landscaping, signage. I mean, those are off the top of my head.
Would it make sense to reach out to someone like Dennis Glick or Jennifer Magic or? There's got to be multiple folks in the community that have done this type of facilitated. Community planning effort. Instead of us just like, again, guessing and trying to do our best. Like this really requires some thought and to do it right and to really get out of it what we want. And so. I just, I don't have, I mean, I've done these types of things, but I don't have the time, the volunteer time to put in. To pulling this together. Or reaching out to PC, you know, someone that does this and can kind of come in and. Like develop it for us, so it's really good.
You're talking more about pre pre-development.
Well, no, like literally like thinking through, what do we want, like what are our goals and objectives for doing this? How do we want to capture input? How do we want to display? You know, just someone who has has the experience to do what we're doing. I do not. I could wing it, but I I can't, I don't want to. I'm sure all of us could wing it, but I'm saying let's not wing it and let's do it right.
Yeah.
And I mean to you, Jim, like this has had to have happened in this community before, like what are our resources that are? This has had to have happened in this community before, like what are our resources that are available? Who can we reach out to to help us with this?
I would suggest that perhaps we want to do a little. Executive search to the city manager's office and. If we have a ballpark budget in mind, we. I don't think we're going to be in a position where we would need to bid something. But we could use professional services to hire a firm that can handle not just the facilitation. But the whole organization of the project.
And I'm thinking less about a firm and thinking about who's in our community. We have MSU Extension. We have, we have all these incredible resources right here without going through. Like a procurement process for someone who. Who knows?
Part of it might be just a question of scale. And how formal or informal we we want this to be. You know, we could be talking about. $5,000 or $30,000. Yeah, the name, so these names. Just as possibilities, Dennis Glick, Jen Magic, I think. Possibly would be quite good. She's got a lot of pet planning background. Ralph Johnson, Katie Weaver. Is good at facilitating meetings. I'm not sure how. You know, I think we need somebody. Would be helpful to have somebody with some city city planning type. Background, I think.
Jennifer, do you have any experience in doing this type of? Scenario that we're talking about or have any feedback for us about what may or may not have worked in the past?
Yeah, actually, I do. I do have some experience from a long time ago and participating in charrettes that other people. Facilitated and organized as part of a comprehensive plan update. And one of them was actually for a new comprehensive plan in Lafayette, Louisiana. I honestly, I think that if you want to kind of get the most. Input and feedback from a community. It really isn't a bad idea to consider. Somebody, if not a private firm, like a planning firm, but somebody who. Has experience, not just not just facilitating the charrette, but also knowing how to get the right discussions going. How to present things, how to ask information, get the survey information, how to publicize the event before it happens. Kind of all of that. Again, I don't know what resources you have in the community as Wendy mentioned. From individuals, you know, I but. But I do know that planning firms, this is typically something they they kind of do on the front end of doing. A planning process if they're contracted to do the whole thing. I just. You know, it's kind of one stop shopping.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the. I think big picture, long term, one of the things we're. Kind of asking. Is like, how? How do we? Get sort of a critical mass here such that, I mean, this could potentially be quite a substantial project. You know, to do a lot of hardscaping and. Improvement, you know, in the town. You know, way beyond us just writing up an ordinance. And and so it. Becomes a question, how do you get? You know what? Enough people behind that as a concept. To to have the political will to carry that through.
And the other thing I wanted to mention is is Jim, I think you said that a lot of the businesses on the north side are are leases in the railroad right away.
Yeah.
So I'm going to guess that anything done in the railroad right away, the railroad. Commission or the the is it BNSF here? I mean, you might want to get their buy-in first because. It, you know, it unfortunately could be a moot point. I don't know if y'all have looked into that already. I do know that where I come from, you know, railroads kind of. Sometimes are hesitant to let people do things in there right away, but if the leases. Indicate that improvements can be made on on the areas where those businesses operate, then. Probably fine.
Right? Yeah, I know I I would second that. Now, there's a kind of a long history between Livingston and the railroad. Not all of it very pretty. What's happened here is we've had. A different railroad company lease. The railroad yards and the and the tracks. For the last 30, 40 years and just recently they announced that they were. Giving up their lease and and all the property was going back to Burlington Northern. So it's a transition period in that arrangement too. And then the other person involved needs to be involved is the Montana Department of Transportation because they've got. Certain right away. Jason to the road that they own. And they've got their own rules and regulations too. But that that's a reason why you would want to get the city on board. And get the new city manager on board and. Talk nice to a lot of people for quite a while. He was, you can do it and get some cooperation.
So is it possible to come up with our next steps? Because I could see this dragging out for a really long time. And I think it can be pretty simple. But I think we need to have tangible. Like actions and a timeline to make this happen before the January meeting. I would suggest really reaching out to MSU Extension first and talking with them since this is what they do. They typically facilitate around community based challenges. And whether or not they have recommendations of folks that. They've worked with that can do the other process. And that's essentially what Jennifer Magic did around the growth policy. So. I'd be happy to reach out to both MSU Extension and Jennifer, but I think. Besides that, we still need to have a plan of all the things that need to happen between now and January to pull this off.
The thought occurred to me that this could be like a two stage affair. And what we do for the zoning commission. Could be a first kind of a quick and dirty cut. At this process. In other words, we could just have a public meeting, make the usual announcements. Some little extra advertising, have one public meeting. Get whatever feedback we want or whatever we feedback we get then becomes the basis for us. Five people spending the next few months rewriting. The gateway overlay ordinance. And boom, that's done within a period of. I don't know, three or four months. And then this whole Park Street. Improvement District is a much kind of a grander idea. And and that involves a lot more people, more expense and more time. And would, you know, potentially take a year. But I I would, one side of me really would like to get that. The ordinance, the gateway overlay ordinance written up and done, just so that we have something inherent and on the books. Because we continue to have development pressures. In town and we'd like to be able to respond. To whatever proposals come down the bike. Does that make sense? To do it in kind of a two, two, two stage, two phase kind of way?
Jim, what were the dates? Or timing of that? Would January be the first? Public session we're thinking and then? The charrette would be a little bit later?
No, I think we would just do a, well, we would just have a public meeting in January. And. We would structure the meeting as a kind of mini charrette. And and we would just maybe just do it in house. And maybe we get five people, maybe we get 20 people. But we give everybody, you know, we do enough visuals and. So that we're all kind of on the same page and then we just get the feedback at that meeting. And then in February and March, we go back. And work through the ordinances that are on the books now. And 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 work on rewriting them. So hopefully we have something done in maybe March or April.
That makes sense to me. I definitely second Wendy's suggestion to reach out to. MSU Extension. We've had some good luck with other not for profits I've worked for. With some of their facilitation and support with project planning. I'm also wondering if we could, I don't know if PCEC is still doing their community conversations. But I feel like that's a really good way to drum up interest and share. The idea about what we're thinking of. I think some of their other. Conversations have gotten a lot of people to come to city meetings, which seems. Pretty useful. You know, Michael, I'm meeting with Sarah and Max tomorrow about flood. Flood response and recovery stuff. I can ask them about this as well and see. What their plan is for the next six months or so. Cool.
Yeah, I think I think we'd want to be. Just speaking frankly. My experience with PCC is they do tend to want to take ownership of projects and ideas. And I I would like it this first phase at least to be. You know, something that, you know, we're affiliated with the city in the city administration. Happy to have them participate in it. I. I think we have to be the ones that want it.
Maybe we could use them after that first January meeting to get the word out to take a look at some of the documents and information we've had. Then at that point. We have something out there for people to respond to and share with them as well. I hear what you're saying on the keeping it affiliated with the city for sure.
Jim, how quickly can the commission approve? The expense of a facilitator for us?
Assuming it's not a huge sum, one meeting.
And we can just put it on the agenda days before?
Yeah, we probably have. Jim draft a letter to put on the agenda.
Okay. Do we know what are their dates for December?
They're supposed to meet on the 20th and I have not heard yet. A lot of times they cancel that being so close to the holidays.
Okay.
So I wouldn't bank on that at this point. So you're probably only looking at one and it would be the. First Tuesday of the month.
So we need to have whatever information we need as far as who and how much. By by then?
Could be looking at the sixth.
The sixth of December.
Also, if I'm understanding what Jim was saying a second ago, I think he was trying to keep. This meeting in January just with the zoning commission. Information and sharing and public comment. And then. Gather feedback there and then do. A public threat after that. In a couple of months, is that the plan? Or do you even want to do one of those, Jim? Just making sure I'm following on.
Yeah, I think that that was my my suggestion.
Okay.
So then the question is if we're just doing a. Zoning Commission, public meeting. Informational meeting. We still need to provide a. Some some graphics, some illustrations. You know, whether that's, you know, in the community hall and we just assemble some images and. And run them up on the big screen for people, but you do need to. Put a kind of a coherent. Program together to get people. Thinking about the issues and making their. You know, getting kind of relevant responses from whoever shows up. So it's going to take some effort and whether we. Want to get somebody from like extension involved. Or that might be the question.
I feel like it would be helpful to have someone involved. It's a lot of work and a short timeframe during holiday season.
Yeah. Too easy to get sidetracked. Busy with personal stuff. So I don't know, I. Two kind of names that. I think we should at least talk to her, you know, somebody from extension. And then at least talk to Jen Magic. I think she's. Got a pretty deep. Level of experience and sort of city planning issues. She might, she may or may not be able to help us. But at least have some ideas. Okay. I think this has been a good discussion. We should be. Kind of. Pretty clear now about what tasks. Lie ahead of us that we want to accomplish in the next. Month, we've got another meeting coming up in December. And then. Need to be ready in a second, second Tuesday of January. For this.
Jim, will you humor me and go through your to do list so I can make sure I have? What I think we've been talking about for the meeting minutes, just so we can use this as reference if we'd like to.
Yeah, that's great. That's what I was trying to get at. I was trying to put together a to do list. So. I think we need to kind of just shop this around. I I've got my to do list is. Well. To talk to the city manager, let the city manager know. What we're doing. And that may or may not just be a letter that gets included in. The city commission packet. Something like that. And. Then we also need to talk this around to. A variety of people. The names I've got here are Dennis Glick, Jen Magic. Possibly Ralph Johnson, Katie Weaver, and then somebody at MSU Extension. As people who. Might have some good ideas. And along the way may fetch them out and say. Are they interested in participating? So.
Do we have someone who wants to do that? I'll call. I'll talk to MSU Extension and Jennifer. Awesome. I can talk to Katie as well. Awesome. Thank you.
Wendy, okay. I'll talk to Dennis Glick. He, who else we can come up with? Okay, Ralph Johnson, I. I knew him just a little bit 30, 40 years ago. But he's he's another possibility. Or there may be somebody else that at the architecture school that might. Be interested. I don't know. But anyhow, ask around too, who else? Thinks this is a good idea and has some ideas and who might. Be of help. And then. Let's try to do that all in the next week or so. To cut in and then we kind of need to finalize. This January meeting, what's the scale and scope of it? What kind of a budget we might need for? this January meeting, what's the scale and scope of it? What kind of a budget we might need for it? You know, if we're just talking about some printing costs and a little bit of advertising costs, you know, it might be 500 bucks. If we need to get a facilitator in that, you know, might be more than that. But I'd need to kind of get a number together so that I could write a letter up to send to the city.
Should we meet again this month?
Uh, would it be worthwhile to have another working meeting in two weeks?
Sure.
I think it'd be, it's Thanksgiving, I'm headed out of town, I think on the 19th for a couple of weeks, so. Not the, it's already getting difficult.
Right.
I do think it would be good if we can have a, I know we can't do a shared document, but just the outline of all of the pieces that we need to consider. And I think, Deborah, you were already talking about some of those pieces and are we going to pull those from the historical commission as like the main sections for the body of work? Or do we still need to work on sectioning out those big areas of work?
Um, all of that's sort of editing, rewriting of the existing ordinances, I think would happen after January.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm talking about like what we want to present at the meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we do need to do that. Yeah, I think it needs, it, you know, the city ordinances are way too complicated. I think that whatever we present up on the big screen would have to be really simplified with some nice graphics. So I, and I don't know who has, you know, really good artistic capabilities, put that together. You know, I certainly have done a lot of PowerPoint presentations over the years, but you know, it might be possible for us to do that in-house. But I guess what I'm thinking is that in the next week, if we could just shop this idea around to likely people and try to get a little feedback. Uh, I know I went in and talked to Bojlaak last week and he got me focused on Kirk and Gutters on Park Street. It's something I hadn't even been considering. It's, you know, pretty spot on. So I think the more we kind of talk to concerned people who've got some expertise that are, that a list of ideas we'll have for that meeting. Well, I think, I, I sort of think that we should just work informally. We've got, we've got email and we've got that Google Doc thing. And the idea we could get together in a month for December meeting and kind of finalize our plans. Is, is that too vague? Are we not assigning sufficient specific tasks to people to make sure things get done?
It feels vague to me. Yeah.
We're still kind of talking about two separate things though, right? Like this January meeting, we're going to concentrate on overlay and how we want to begin the process of the rewrite of the ordinances. And then there's this other thing that says Park Street.
Yeah. You know, maybe I, maybe we should just drop that entirely from our thinking and just see how January unfolds for us.
All right. I would say, I would say the overlays are going to be plenty of work for us for a little while. But out there in the distance, there's this whole Park Street question.
Yeah. Yeah. And who knows, we may cause a little controversy and get some extra people coming to our meetings and, and it might turn into something. And at that point, it's even more of a reason to do some sort of an organized concerted effort.
Yeah, probably take, probably take four or five months just to get a single response from BNSF. Who knows?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Let's just concentrate on our January meeting, having a public discussion with a bunch of infographics. And just to get feedback from whoever shows up. And then sort of based on that, we will put together, we'll start editing and rewriting the documents that we have. And and then that, that process takes some months too, because we've got to, you know, once we write something up, we've got to notice it and we've got to formally, formally adopt whatever we've written and then it goes to the city commission. Then they have to discuss it and adopt it. So it's, it's an extended process.
So that would mean for next month's meeting, at least how I'm taking my to-dos, that I need to come up, come to the meeting in December with my areas where I think we need to talk about ordinances and also some ideas and visuals for those. So if, if I want something to say about lighting or landscaping, then I show up in December with my thoughts on that and my visuals.
I think that would be great.
Okay.
And then I don't know, we might want to think about that if we can, everybody's got a thumb drive with a bunch of pictures on it. I don't know how to do that. If we can have a, you know, kind of throw everything up on a board so that we can all talk our way through it. And kind of do the first.
Give that stuff to us, Jim, we can upload it. So everybody can see it.
Yeah, you, you being the host of the, of the Zoom meeting.
Yeah, we can, we can get it so everybody can share it.
Okay. All right.
So we would email it to Faith?
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I would encourage everybody to think about these gateways, drive up and down. We ought to get together and brew up some hot chocolate and take a drive in a car together. This is totally illegal, of course. But just drive up and down the entrances to Livingston and talk about what's, what's really there and what we don't like about it. But I, I think that's the way to get this done.
I love that idea.
Yeah. I think we can do it two people at a time legally. But once we have three people in the car, it's.
What if we have two cars right next to each other? That seems safe, right?
Yeah, we could do that.
Just shout across.
Yeah. And then go in and have some coffee.
Well, we, we can't, we just can't use the word zoning and ordinance and things like that. I mean, we're just talking about what we see. Hey, look at this. Hey, look at that. What do you think?
Yeah, it's not, we're not working, actually working on anything yet. You know, we're not doing official business yet.
Good, good group of friends that just happen, you know, want to spend a little time together. That's all.
Okay. Well, I'm up for it. All right. Is that a plan? Yeah, let's do our best to, and I'm as bad as anybody at kind of letting things slide when I get the rest of my life intervenes, but let's, um, do our best to kind of get prepared, prepared with what we can find for our December meeting. And let's take a few drives up and down Park Street. And and work on this individually. Well then. Any other suggestions? No, I think that's a a little vague, but a good plan. Or, or we're hearts in the right place. All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll let you guys off early. Right. I'm going to, I'll adjourn the meeting at this point. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Nice to meet you, Jennifer.
Yeah, Jennifer.
Nice to meet you, Jennifer.
You guys too. Enjoy your election day holiday.
All right. Bye-bye.
Thanks y'all. Bye.
Yeah, welcome.